Changes to the town code and a public hearing on the proposed changes. Once the ordinance is introduced, the mayor and council will open the public hearing that is required by town code. Yesterday, the attorney for the applicant submitted a request that I recuse myself from this matter. I declined to do so. This is a legislative matter, and the legislative powers of the town are vested in a council consisting of six members and a mayor. The request for my recusal is rooted in my doing the job of mayor and fulfilling the promises I made to all of you this time a year ago. Those promises include keeping the public informed, proposing legislation, and championing policy that will promote sustainable growth and optimization of our existing assets. And finally, I promised to continue to help Sykesville evolve while retaining its rural and agricultural character, values, and resiliency. So let's get down to business, the first order of which tonight is the only order of business, and that is the Public Hearing and Consider, Discuss, Act on the Introduction of Ordinance 2022-03, Zoning Text Amendment, Planned Employment Center. May I have a motion from the council to introduce ordinance 2022-03, zoning text amendment, Planned Employment Center?
So moved, now make that motion.
Thank you. So that motion was made by Councilman Grassley and seconded by Councilman Schofield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like it's unanimous. Are there any opposed? Okay, so that motion passes unanimously, and ordinance 2022-03 zoning text amendment, Planned Employment Center has been introduced. I will open the public hearing required by Town Code, Section 180-114. The process of the hearing will be as follows: staff presentation, applicant presentation, public comment, followed by a Q&amp;A opportunity for the council to ask questions of staff and/or the petitioner. Once the public hearing is closed, the matter will be closed for this evening. The next step will be the mayor and council's consideration of the adoption of the ordinance, which will be scheduled for May 9th, 2022. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Thank you. Councilman Grassley, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Dyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we are, that passes unanimously, and the public hearing is now open. Alright, so let's begin with, as I just mentioned above, staff, staff report. Joe, can you start us off, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So before you tonight is the introduction of ordinance 2022-03 zoning text amendment for the Planned Employment Center District, which proposes to amend the code of the town of Sykesville, Chapter 80 zoning, Article 22, Planned Employment Center District. The proposed amendments to Chapter 180 of the town code reflected in the ordinance have been requested by the owners of the Warfield properties. Pursuant to Section 180-115 of the town code, the mayor and council referred the proposed amendments to the planning commission on January 24th for important recommendation. This referral was done with guidance to the planning commission that the request should be evaluated on its face rather than attempting to enter into a negotiation with the applicant, given that is a legislative proposal and not a property-specific request. The reasoning for that being that there was a concern that the applicant's request was simply too drastic of a change to the Planned Employment Center District, and offers by staff to work with the applicant on modification to the request prior to its proceeding were declined. The commission met on February 7th, March 21st, and April 4th to discuss the request and voted to recommend the council denial of the proposal due to its inconsistencies in the proposal with the town's comprehensive plan and the purpose and intent in the Planned Employment Center District. My understanding is that this recommendation by the planning commission on April 4th was rooted partly in the belief that the applicant was working on amendments to the request based on statements by Warfield representatives at the March 21st PC meeting. Shortly after the recommendation was made, the town received a letter from the applicant stating that the planning commission's recommendation was premature and that the applicant had not been given an opportunity to complete their presentation. It was communicated to the applicant that the commission would not likely reconsider the original request due to the expected amendments they, the planning commission, believed were forthcoming. And in light of the expected amendments to the petition, a new request would be referred to when the amendments were submitted. Since then, the applicant has informed me that no such amendments were pending despite specific communications stating otherwise after the PC vote. Should the applicant reconsider this path, an amendment to their request based on their, based on the feedback received from the planning commission and comments tonight, it would be treated as a new request and referred to the planning commission as required. As for the request itself...
The purpose of the Planned Employment Center District, as currently stated, is, among others, to create a mixture of office, retail, recreational, hotel, institutional, light industrial, and residential uses within a single structure or within multiple structures. This purpose is supported by regulations within the current ordinance through the designation of different commercial categories and the assignment of specific percentages for each category in order to ensure a desired mixture. The proposed amendment combines all commercial uses into a general non-residential group, making the purpose a more simplified to create a mixture of non-residential and residential uses. However, this change combined with the proposal to eliminate the commercial groupings elsewhere in the district regulations and the overall reduction in the required non-residential percentages makes the general predictability of the zone difficult as nearly any combination of future uses would satisfy the proposed requirements. This particular issue is complicated further by the proposed elimination of dozens of conditional uses and establishing over 30 more principal uses in a zone that has, that already has over 60. A conditional use is one that's been identified as needing special consideration before it can be incorporated into a development. Examples include gas stations, building supply stores, and nursing homes. Another purpose of the PEC district is to assure compatibility of the proposed land uses and, quote, "to encourage harmonious and coordinated development of sites." When the PEC district was established, there were, there was clearly some time taken in looking at various categories and uses listed with both the permitted and conditional sections. By making all of these uses permitted, the town loses the ability to determine if the uses are being implemented appropriately within the zone. Despite any suggestion otherwise, the town's planning commission would not be able to reject a proposal of any of the new permitted uses unless these, unless there is a specific regulation that was not being met. The proposal also calls for the increase in residential density from two units per acre to six and a half. This would make the PEC district the most intense residential zone in town by slightly outpacing the town's purely residential R-7500 district by over half a unit per acre. The density, the density increase combined with the doubling of the maximum allowable residential percentages from 35% to 70% makes a situation where the zone is no longer compatible with the namesake Planned Employment. A dominant residential component could also have a significant effect on the way a neighborhood is planned in order to accommodate for infrastructure impacts. For example, traffic impact would have the most effect during a standard AM and PM peak travel times, whereas having a mixed-use project with several types of uses strategically implemented would spread these impacts throughout the day. And finally, the town's recently adopted comprehensive plan acknowledges the complicated nature of the Warfield project. It anticipates the need for a mixed-use zone that allows for flexibility on the property. If development in accordance with the current PEC district is no longer viable, then the applicant, as they've done, can submit a request to amend the PEC zone. It does not mean the council must agree with the proposal. It's still, I still believe that a workshop in some fashion is necessary to determine the most agreeable mixture of uses, assuming all parties at the table understand that changes must be made to both the current request and the existing regulation. In fact, the comprehensive plan specifically states that the town worked collaboratively with the developers of Warfield to engage in an urban design workshop to develop a new vision for the mixed-use development, the outcome of which may be used to inform future zoning. This can include the creation of a new zone or amendment of the existing text. The council has an important decision to make, one that has potential significant growth impacts. These developers, along with other developers, are well within their rights to seek out alternatives to develop their land, which is and will continue to be respected. But the council, as elected community leaders, has the responsibility in determining if the ordinance changes that come before them and the impacts those changes have fit the community needs now and in the future. In the judgment of town staff, this proposal would create a zoning district that's simply unmanageable from a regulatory standpoint and would have unpredictable outcomes on the site currently zoned PEC and any future site that could be designated Planned Employment. Due to these issues, it's been recommended by staff that the applicant withdraw their request and make adjustments based on the feedback they have received. The Warfield team has chosen not to do this, as they have every right to do, and to continue to seek and ask for the most flexibility they believe is necessary to accomplish their vision for the property. But as stated before, the council has the responsibility in determining if these changes are in fact the best interest of the community, not just one property. Based on the issues and the alternative paths available to the applicant to submit a revised proposal, staff recommends denial of the proposed text amendment, and I'm happy to answer questions after the applicant and the public has a chance to speak.
Thank you, Joe. So at this time, I'd like to offer Warfield Investments LLC an opportunity to present their petition to the council and to you all. I promise that you guys will have our attention, and I trust that you will be mindful of the public's time and sensitive to their desire to be heard. So welcome to the podium. Who's speaking on your behalf first?
Roger.
Introduce yourself.
Getting plugged in here.
So, they, that's been discussed and is, been reported to me that, that an hour is, is likely the target.
I don't think we're gonna go, go that long because until a little more than an hour ago, we thought we had 20 minutes. So, we'll, we'll be a little more prompt than that, I promise. Okay. My name's Roger Conley. I'm the owner and investor at, at Warfield. I first came to Sykesville more than 20 years ago. Had a medical business with my brother. We were looking for an office, and I'd hoped to put it here. We wound up in Columbia, but loved the town, Vex was there and not a lot else. It was a long time ago. I came back 10 years ago, more than 10 years ago now, and discovered Warfield and fell in love with it. I've always been a history buff. Crazy about antiques, history, stories, love that stuff. And so I just, I fell in love and have been working since then to save those beautiful buildings, bring them back in, to life in a very positive way. We agreed to a sales contract eight years ago, taking that long to get, to get this far. We adopted in that same year the PEC zoning that we're talking about. So eight years ago, we wrote the zoning regulation, then six years ago, proposed the plan that you'll hear as the approved plan right now. Lots of things have changed in six years, including learning, the market, a whole bunch of things that we're gonna talk about tonight. So we're here to talk about a proposed zoning text amendment. What that means is we're, we're talking about the text that discusses what goes inside a Planned Employment Center. We're not changing the map, we're not changing the boundary, the same two parcels are involved. We're just, we want to update that to, to increase the probability of success, of reworking those buildings. The zoning process in Maryland, as Joe described, starts with the comprehensive plan that was adopted last year. It's a terrific plan. Should be very proud of the town that that represents and, and all of the wonderful thought processes that went into it. It's all about the vision for the town. The next level down is the zoning. That's what we're here to talk about tonight. That's kind of the rules of the game, the, the boundaries of the picture in which we're going to paint what happens in that property. So that's the zoning. The next piece is the concept plan, and that's where we get into materials and, and the pattern book and all the different things that, that regulate what the property is going to look like and how it works. And it's normally in that, in that comprehensive plan, the next step, that the public workshops and lots of, lots of engagement where the plan starts to emerge. This is just the rulemaking session. The next piece is what it starts to look like. There are still two big pieces that come after that. So from the overall conceptual plan, we then go to preliminary plan, more details about what do they look like, where do they go, can you really fit them all here? What, what does that look like? What materials? What about the paving? What about the parking? All those things. That's the preliminary plan. And then the next one is the final plan, where we get down to real complete engineering, bid documents, all that sort of thing. At each of those steps, but in particular those last three, there is very rigorous oversight by the planning commission, the historic district commission, all doing their evaluation and proposing to the town council how this ought to go. So whatever we adopt tonight is just the first step in that long process. So I'm delighted to see you all here tonight. I mean, it, it speaks volumes for the enthusiasm about the town and the interest in what's going on at Warfield because we need the support of all of you to figure out what best to be as this vision emerges. Some of you may be here tonight to oppose the plan. There is no plan. That's not what tonight is about. The next step is what gets to the plan. The only plan that there is, is the one that was adopted six years ago. And we'll show you what that is and why we think there ought to be changes from that to be able to move into the future in a more positive way. So tonight, we were asking three things, and we're already past the first one, but we'd asked by letter and everything else for the, for the council, respectfully, to defer this decision. The recommendation from the planning commission has come in, but the second request from us is that it be referred back to the planning commission for the consideration which we haven't been able to get to yet. Joe mentioned three meetings where this was addressed. The first meeting was just getting questions. The second one, we finally got a chance to, to really address some of the issues and start getting some of the concepts and data on the table. At the end of it, we were hearing resistance. We said, let us think about it, we'll get back to you. The next meeting, two weeks later, was the, the one that Joe talked about, on the fourth, where the, the planning commission said, we recommend denial. I couldn't be there. I was in California bearing my very best friend. I was out there for the weekend, couldn't get back for it. Ordinarily, if we don't have presentation materials back in on Wednesday, we're not on the agenda for Monday night. That's the way the process has worked. We weren't there. We, we were still deliberating what we were gonna do with the feedback, and so we were surprised that the planning commission said, we think you should vote to deny. We're still requesting a meeting with the mayor. We've been asking for meetings with her since, since her candidacy. We've not had those opportunities to meet. So there's a ton of information, ton of conversation, discussion. No decisions get made outside of a public meeting like this. But there's an opportunity to develop some understanding, a common set of facts, a much better understanding of what's going on and why we're trying to do what we're doing. The approval process we've been through has been irregular and inconsistent compared to what we've been through previously. As I mentioned, we were, we had sort of three times we were on the agenda, but really only one opportunity to talk. We got through half the material that night, and we said, we, we still have to get through a conversation about the two really critical ingredients of this, which is the comprehensive plan and how what we were talking about is consistent with that, and the second one is, is employment, Planned Employment Center. What's the employment angle? What are we doing here? I don't know if we're gonna have time to get to everybody's questions tonight. We have a little more time than I thought we were going to, so, so maybe we'll have some more dialogue. But at the end of the meeting, we'll make sure that everybody who wants it has our contact information. We've been holding focus groups, tours, all kinds of different things to try to increase the dialogue with all of you. And so we'd, we would, whatever happens tonight, we'd love for that to happen. There's been a tremendous amount of confusion, disinformation, misunderstanding, call it what you will, about what's going on tonight. I'll just mention one in passing. Just 10 minutes ago, I was reading an article that talked about the change that we did at the sign at the entrance from Warfield Commerce and Cultural Center to Warfield at Historic Sykesville. We didn't drop cultural. That's not what this was about. It was to, it was to increase the connection to historic preservation and presence in Sykesville. Warfield at Historic Sykesville. It's the website, it's the name, it's what it's all about. We in fact are proposing a dramatic increase in the kinds of activities we'd like to do in a community center, engage a whole bunch of different cultural elements that we haven't had a chance to talk about yet. So, I'll just talk about the underlying, really the fundamental values that we brought into this and that we're still working hard to do. The first one is saving those 12 beautiful buildings. That's what so struck me. And, and despite the enormous cost, we're still absolutely positively dedicated to that, but we need help because of that cost. We're proposing, and again, these are just concepts, there's no plan yet, but the ideas we've been presenting increase the, the commercial activity there by 170% compared to what's there right now. And embracing a whole bunch of different things that are for-profit businesses, community activities, a whole bunch of things in that shell of this, the largest building on campus. That community center has got all sorts of different things that could happen. We need help figuring out what it is and, and how to make it compatible not only with downtown as it exists, but also downtown as it's envisioned in the comprehensive plan. Lots of cool things happening, and we want to somehow to balance that. But, but there are a whole bunch of things that I think can happen. Culinary, incubator, a whole bunch of other spaces I think could be, could be really terrific there. We're also promoting jobs and employment, and I'm gonna describe that in more detail because the world as it is, is not the world that was 20 some years ago when the original concept of an office park was proposed. We're embracing housing, a wider range of housing options in there. Right now, we have luxury townhomes that sell more, for more than the average price of a home in Sykesville. We'd like to do not just those luxury townhomes, but some more affordable options for the kinds of people who are everywhere and very often underserved, in particular rental housing. Some of the people I was talking to this evening who are driving 25, 30 minutes to come to very modest-paying jobs here in Sykesville. So they're, they're up and down 32 every day coming to jobs here. We think we can do some things that dramatically improve the employment situation without a big increase in traffic. I, I've heard this concept referred to as an upzoning. It's not at all. What was approved was a really dense commercial property. I think you'll be surprised when you see the size and scale of the buildings that would meet what had been proposed as the, as a commercial center. A shift to residential is dramatically improves the, the use of natural resources. It's, it's less impactful on traffic, on parking, on green space, on a whole lot of other things in ways that I, we're not gonna be able to get all the way through it tonight, but we'll begin to give you a picture of what that looks like overall. So next, I'll go ahead and, and each of the speakers will introduce themselves, by the way, just so you know who we are as we go through this. And so Steve will next go through some of the issues on, to start to dig into some of these issues.
Thank you, Roger. I didn't want to interrupt you, but all comments should be directed, if you wouldn't mind, to the council moving forward. No worries. Thank you.
Sorry, I hit your microphone there. No, I wasn't supposed to hit it. And I hit it again. For some reason, we're not getting, we're not up there now. Let's try it again. There we go. See if I can get it to...
If everybody promises to stay awake. Is that something I could ask staff to help me out with back there? Janet, does anybody know where the light switch even are? Oh, then no, I'm sorry, we will not be dimming the lights. Carrie, thank you for your efforts. Thank you. No, that's a good point. Obviously, I'm not a media girl.
Okay, thank you very much, Stephen McLeif, partner in Warfield Company.
I'm sorry, Steve. I'm so sorry. My council's reporting to me, I should repeat what was just said by the, for those that couldn't hear. The request was for us to turn the lights down so that this looked better to you guys than the answer was from Carol Media Center, that we can't dim the lights for the purposes of the, the video taking place. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, thank you. So, as a starting point for folks in the audience who may not be familiar with this and folks on the town council, it's important comparatively to go through the current approvals and, and what it means, and compare that to what we think the zoning text amendment, the type of development the zoning text amendment would result in. Just to, to recap, the current approved preliminary plan covers 91 acres, including the 29-acre town park. As has been stated, the property is owned Planned Employment Center. That allows, just so folks understand, based on a strict calculation of the ordinance, up to 591,000 square feet of non-residential space and 181 units of residential. The current approved preliminary plan is not that dense. It, it, it's actually about a little less than half that dense. Shows 35,000 square feet of retail, a 125 key hotel, 103,000 square feet of newly constructed office space, and 145 townhouse units and parcels ENF, which is known as Parkside, at, at Warfield. When I say subject to amendment over time, the ultimate build-out, it was always understood the alternate, ultimate build-out would be driven by user interest on the commercial retail and other non-residential side of things, and just the market in general. This is just a quick overview of, of the current plan. I know that's probably hard for a lot of you to see. What we did was, we, we went back and created a model that showed just what a maximum commercial center would look like under the current zoning ordinance. And I'm gonna try to walk through that, it's, it's a video. I'm gonna try to walk through it pretty quickly, but it will give you some sort of idea of, under the current zoning, what could in fact be built here. So this is a view looking, this is Springfield Avenue here, and this is Route 32. If everybody can see that going north, south to north. In the foreground here, you have, there we go, we have Parkside at Warfield. The townhouse is there, currently under construction, and I'm going to pause this. The gray buildings, as you see here, or the gray structures are parking decks, and the blue structures are office buildings. The current zone allows development of commercial office and other structures up to six stories As we keep moving through this, oops, there we go. And I'm gonna try to move through it a little faster. You can see Parcels A and B at the front. Get everybody a little dizzy. This is looking up Route 32, Parcels A and B there. And this is what it looks like when you're coming up Route 32. This is looking back towards the historic campus. I'm sorry if I'm making everybody dizzy. You come into the main entrance here, and you see the Parkside townhouses on your left, and you see a parking deck there on your right. So I'm gonna scoot, scoot up into the roundabout, and this is looking back towards 32. This is what you see from the roundabout. Looking back towards the townhouses, and then looking over to Parcel C and H. What you see in the front there is a sea of parking, two office buildings, five stories each, and a parking deck. Come through the roundabout, and we're coming back around. What you see here to your left is the Nexion building, and what you see to your right is a parking deck and an office, an office building. Now, we point this out because this is what's currently allowed under the zoning, the, the current zoning, and I would argue that what we're proposing, which is not an upzoning, but a shift in, in use... use from commercial to residential. And the actual intensity of development under what we're proposing, if we did a shift to residential, is, is actually less.
Less what?
Less intense. And I'll get into that in a moment. The proposed zoning text amendment was submitted on December 13th. As was stated before, it's a request to amend the existing PEC zoning regulations, which covers Warfield. There are only two properties affected in the town of Sykesville, as the council knows, by the PEC zoning regulations. That's our property and the Antigone property immediately next to Parkside. Again, contemplates a shift from non-residential to residential, but not an increase in development intensity. Although the proposal does maintain the ability to develop non-residential uses, office, retail, light industrial, institutional, community hotel, and, and senior housing of all types. The proposal does include a reclassification of certain conditional in, uses to permitted uses, but we see that as, as something that's not as much of an issue and something that can be talked about and worked through. So at the end of the day, the way we backed into making the changes in, in the, in the ordinance was based upon a lot of studies of, of the various parcels and what could fit there. Test fits or density studies, and we have a tool, if anybody's interested in seeing and mixing and matching and cutting the paste, those, pasting those uses, we have a web-based tool that will allow you to do that. But at the end of the day, if you look at Parcel, Parcels A and B, they are the most fluid because they front Route 32, and they would be ideal for retail when it comes to visibility, the market allowing. The options shown here in this column are, are what are the most viable. The residential options shown here, which is 70 townhomes or 102 over 2 stacked townhomes, would take up all of, all of both Parcels A and B, but the options for preschool and daycare, retail, restaurant, up to 60,000 square feet, gas and convenience store, and senior housing of several types could be mixed and matched and blended on that, on that parcel, on those parcels. Parcel C and H, we are currently proposing for, it's currently proposed for 103,000 square feet of office. We're proposing 105 townhomes or 162 over 2 stacked townhomes or a mix. And Parcel D is, is the one that's the real, is, is the real driver of all this because we are committed to historic preservation and have worked very hard to unearth the incentives and create the incentives, working with the state, to, to allow those buildings to be rehabbed. We're proposing 177 multifamily workforce housing units there, and then there would be institutional office and community of 31,648 square feet, and office of 45,452. I heard somebody ask a moment ago about what I meant by intensity, and I did a few calculations this afternoon, went back and, and looked at our numbers from all of our various studies. The first thing that's been put out there is, I've heard, I've heard things like, we're going to increase, our plan will increase the population of the town by 100%, and then I heard 40%, and I've heard a lot of different things. The end of the day, based upon census numbers and household sizes from the most recent census, we think that the increase is around 1,500. Whether you like that or don't like that, that's, those are what we think the numbers are, and those what are what the consultant, who the town and, and, and the developer, the town and the developer agreed to employ several years ago to study this project, to do the fiscal and economic impact studies. Those are their numbers from the census.
Steve, can I ask you how that was, the 1,500, what calculation was used to arrive at that number, please?
Are we, are we holding questions till after?
It's, it's just a quick question, if you can answer it.
It was, it was based upon census numbers that, so the average for a single family or townhouse is, because the, the census doesn't disaggregate those two types.
Right.
Is 3.02, and multifamily is 1.72. Units, people per, per unit.
Multiplied by how many units?
411 townhouses and 177 multifamily units.
Okay.
Okay, schools.
Confused.
School impacts. Using similar multipliers provided by the same consultant and talking to the school board, we came up with impacts of 198 new students, based upon 411 townhome units, 177 multifamily units. For the record, those multipliers are .43 for townhouse and .12 for multifamily. It's important to point out that the Carroll County school system, over the past two decades has shrunk, the student population has shrunk from, I believe it's around 29,000 to 25,000 students. And the comp plan itself talks about a decrease in the student population in town of 200. So I would argue that what we're proposing is not only neutral, but based upon the fiscal and economic impact studies done, the town's had a chance to review, and it's gotten their own studies done, that our project pays for itself, it's accretive. There's actually, we create a surplus, an operational surplus for schools. And we frankly, you know, are accretive on a tax base, to the tax base, I believe it was to the tune of about $300,000 a year to the town overall. Water and sewer, I've heard concerns, actually, when I've been out in the community talking to the people, and I'm always happy to dispel this, we already have an allocation that was granted for this project of 142,000 gallons per day. And that, that allocation, that was allocated in September of 2016, and that allocation is adequate to cover what we're proposing. Parking, I hear a lot about parking. Our, our current plan, the PEC preliminary plan that's approved, per code, requires 1,640 spaces. The max plan that I showed you building out per the zoning completely is 2,316 spaces. What we're proposing is expected to yield about 1,430 spaces, or require 1,430 spaces. So that's a difference of, respectively, of 200 spaces and close to 900 spaces between the two. Roger, I think, mentioned adequate public facilities, and when he was talking about the approval process. It's really important for folks to understand that when we get to the site plan stage, we always have to go through an adequate public facilities test. We had to do it on Parkside, we had to do it on Building F. And that's for water and sewer, roads, fire and rescue, schools, police. So no matter what is approved with the, approved with the zoning, we will still have to face that test with every site plan or subdivision plan that is submitted. But I would throw out there too, I mean, we've, we've had, we've had two, during my tenure on this deal, which was since 2016, we've had two traffic studies and one update done on this project. And in talking to our traffic consultant, the traffic impacts of what we're proposing is actually far less. The residential traffic impacts are actually far less than the current approved PEC plan. Our estimate is that the current approved PEC plan would generate, when fully built out, close to 13,000 trips a day, and what we're talking about with the mixture of residential and, and a smaller amount of commercial, would be somewhere closer to 7,000 trips a day. Under the max plan, allowed under the zoning that the, that the town council approved in 2016, the maximum trips exceed 20,000 a day if you have 500,000 square feet of office and 181 residential units. So as for impacts, I know there's been a lot of talk about impacts out there, and, look, we can, we can debate the numbers as much as we want tonight. I thought it was important to put some numbers out there, but at the end of the day, they will all be checked in an APF, Adequate Public Facilities Test, in any, in any site plan or subdivision process. So I am going to turn the podium over for a few moments to Sean Davis, who is our planner who's been with this project, I think, longer than any of us. There he is.
I sure can. Thank you.
Sean, I'll take this and...
Just wanted to note, we're at the 30-minute mark for your...
Let me know when you want to break this. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sean Davis. I'm a principal with Morris Ritchie Associates. I'm a planner and landscape architect, and have been involved with Warfield since 1998, when I worked with then-Mayor Herman on the original Warfield Shrett. I've been working in the town of Sykesville since 1997, and I know I look that old, so I'm not even going to try and, try and fake that one. So when we began this process of proposing the zoning amendment, we were told, rather specifically by the town, show us what you're, what you're interested in. Provide us with what you're interested in. And that's what we did. We crafted an ordinance and submitted it to the town with the understanding that it would be a collaboration, working effort for us to refine that. We had never anticipated in our initial submission that it would be brought onto the Planning Commission with an up or down vote on what was proposed, that there would be a collaborative effort in working with the Planning Commission to refine that proposal, as we did in 2014 when we wrote the original PEC zoning work, mixed-use ordinance. So we were a little shocked when we were not, did not have the opportunity to present the Planning Commission with one of the most important aspects of any text amendment or rezoning, this is a text amendment, which is compliance with the comprehensive plan. I passed out before you, or to you, a list of elements that are taken directly from your comprehensive plan, and I'd like to review those really quickly. First, page six, goal statement, growth and future land use, and promote the successful mixed-use redevelopment of Warfield. Number two, page 14, existing character and opportunities downtown. New commercial uses outside of this area, being downtown, could potentially detract from Main Street and would not be ideal. Number three, page 15, public input on future town investments. Warfield is tied for fifth with parks and recreation. The development of Warfield garners 23% of the vote. On page 16, primary goals for growth and future land use, support mixed-use redevelopment of the Warfield complex. Page 19, consider a hybrid form-based zoning policy. Second paragraph, this plan recommends that the town may consider a hybrid form-based approach for a future update to its current zoning ordinance. The hybrid approach means retaining traditional zoning district designations, but incorporating building form and function design standards based on the town's current urban development patterns and densities, and future land use recommendations for downtown and Warfield. We firmly believe this is already baked into the PEC approval process with a pattern book, which we developed in combination with the Planning Commission during the original PEC, and we went through seven iterations of the pattern book before it was ultimately approved. That is fundamentally a form-based code with traditional underlying zoning categories. On page 20, explore annexation options. Third bullet point, northeast of the town's municipal boundary located adjacent to Warfield and the Raincliff development. Further explanation is continued in the final paragraph on this page and shown on the map on page 22. Fundamentally, if those of you who had an opportunity to look at the comprehensive plan would look at that map, you would see that everything north and west and east of Warfield and Raincliff is in your future annexation. So how Warfield ties into that is really, really critical. The bulk of the discussion regarding Warfield and your comprehensive plan is on page 24 and 25. It says, support mixed-use redevelopment of the Warfield complex, including, on page 24, future zoning recommendation. A mixed-use zoning designation for Warfield would enable the current or future developers to respond to market conditions and not be locked into the existing master plan shown above. That has made little progress since the property was sold in 2018 due to regional market conditions and the cost of historic building restoration. In rezoning does, if rezoning does occur, the town's approval process would still be required, including approvals from the Historic District Commission, Planning Commission, and Town Council. Any new development, regardless of use, will need to conform to the overall vision and architectural integrity of the Warfield complex. There is nothing that we propose in that PEC zoning ordinance that we provided you that is in contradiction to that. In fact, we fully support that and agree with that 100%. On page 25, the last paragraph says, given the fluid dynamics in the real estate market, future zoning policies for Warfield should consider a form-based mixed-use approach that is more focused on the development's urban form and function than stipulated specific uses. This approach accommodates changes in the real estate market, but reinforces the need for new development to uphold and strengthen Sykesville's historic character and small-town charm. That statement alone was one of the reasons why we included so many of the uses as permitted. We knew we were going to have to come back before the Planning Commission, and with a form-based code, i.e. the pattern book, we would be able to determine collectively, collaboratively, what that process is. Finally, on page 95, Implementation Action Plan 1.3. Work collaboratively with the developers of Warfield to engage in an urban design workshop to develop a new vision and new master plan for mixed-use development. The lead partners are Sykesville and Warfield Development Team. The estimated cost was $2,000. The timeline is short-term, zero to three years, and funding was, would be through the annual operating budget. We absolutely believe in, in a workshop regarding the design of, of Warfield. We did that when we did the original PEC. The town hired expert witnesses, experts to help us or to guide the town through the development and approval of the PEC preliminary plan and pattern book. That's a workshop. That's exactly what happens. But with workshops, it has, you have to have some basis for what's permitted and what's realistic, what's market-based. As part of the original PEC, we were required to provide a market study. We did so. We did that knowing that it was going to be, it was, it basically told us that the non-residential component, as has been, as we'll talk about here in a second, was very, very risky. We made a promise that we were going to pursue it for a couple of years. We were going to document it, and we're going to come back to you if we had, if there was problems and it was unmarketable, and we've done that. So if I can, real quick, next slide, please.
Page 21.
That was, no, that's good. Plan recognizes the need for flexibility. Sorry, next slide. I went through a lot of that. Yep.
Okay, yeah, I figured that.
So the Sage Policy Group study, which is included as part of your comprehensive plan, clearly identifies that Carroll County is in the mid-sized market with 3 million square feet today and generally considered stagnant. Based on the CoStar data from 2021, Carroll County's net absorption of office space is 7,500 square feet per year. At that pace, assuming Warfield would absorb all of the county's office, non-residential market, it would take 30 years, 38 years to absorb what we currently have approved. Okay? And then on the retail side, Eldersburg is a major commercial center, we all know that. I mean, at the end of the day, we all love Main Street, we want to focus on and utilize Main Street every opportunity we can, but for basic shopping needs, groceries, and so on and so forth, we probably head to Eldersburg. That's the, the primary market. So non-residential retail at Warfield is unrealistic, and that's part of the Sage Policy Group, which was part of your comprehensive plan. We agree with that 100%, hence the proposal. Next slide, please. The, the, on the residential side, 26% of your existing residents have an average income under $50,000, which puts them into the low income and moderate income bracket, which requires and focuses on their housing. Next slide, please. And so, you know, I always say, houses are where jobs sleep at night. You need houses to support jobs. Okay? It's, it's unrealistic to have somebody who's, who's employed in that lower market range, lower annual income range, who's traveling, you know, an extensive distance to get to their job. It's exacerbating issue. So homes are where jobs sleep at night. There's tremendous demand for rental and for sale housing. We've seen that at Parkside, and I'm sure anybody here who's, who's put their home on the market in the last year has seen it gobbled up in, in a minute. There's tremendous demand out there. Hopefully, that will continue. The number of job vacancies in Sykesville right now with Northrop Grumman, you have 32 open positions. Springfield Hospital has 35 open positions. Fairhaven has 35 or 30 open positions. Sykesville Schools has 12 support positions. Where is people going to live? There's plenty of job opportunities in the town right now. Adding more into that market is unrealistic. Next slide, please.
May I jump in here?
Sure.
So it's important to think about the way offices and employment worked 20 years ago, 20 some years ago, when this office concept was, was engaged. Changes were happening apace before COVID. COVID dramatically improved, accelerated a number of these changes. Some jobs can't go virtual. House painters, lots of teaching positions, auto mechanics, barbers and hairstylists, those things are always going to be local delivered services. But there are a ton of jobs these days, knowledge based jobs where people prefer to work from home. We're all carrying an office in our pocket. We work from home, from the office, from Starbucks, all these different things. It's a very much more flexible position. If you go to indeed.com, which is the largest paid recruiting site for jobs and put in Sykesville and say, show me all the jobs within five miles. A few months ago was 717 jobs. Yesterday afternoon, 762. Five miles, not up and down 32, half an hour, 40 minutes, whatever it is. The, the working population of Sykesville is only 1,300 something. It's under 1,400. You could, you could increase jobs and prosperity by 50% if you, if you develop work sensitive housing, good office space, whether that's office, work from home, homework, homeschooling, whatever it is, broadband and careful design, we could, we could do a ton of improved job opportunities, quality of life for people by doing it in the housing sector. It, it, it's a, it's a way to attack it in a very different way. Zoom cities is one of the, one of the terms for places people want to live, great places that where you can still get to the office, get to an airport when you need to. I think this is the key. There are many, many of these positions that are at the lower end of the spectrum. It's, it's, it's really informative to just do that search. Go to indeed.com, five miles, Sykesville, and just go through the listing of jobs, all kinds of different things. So again, 25, 24, 26%, depending on what set of numbers you use, the current populations are in this workforce zone, this 50 to 52,000 and below. If you take from the comprehensive plan, the, the moderate income, the workforce numbers up to 120% of the average median income, 56% of the population of Sykesville is in that moderate income section. It's, it's, it's an appropriate market for us to address.
Okay, I'm just going to point out it's 8:03. Are you coming to a, close to an, an end?
He didn't take my time.
Say again? No, no. Total combined time.
Real quickly.
Yeah.
So in the end, it is my professional opinion that the proposed text amendment comports with the comprehensive plan, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's not fully baked yet. That's, that's what we anticipated was an opportunity to discuss and mold and whatnot with the planning commission as part of this, not that it was going to be an up-down vote. That is, the normal process is a bill is introduced, and there is discussions and there's negotiations about that that ultimately come to a decision whether or not the planning commission can recommend anything to the mayor and council, not just what was submitted. That's, we were asked to provide what we want. We did that, and it was an up or down vote. I would also point out that I am a professional landscape architect licensed in the state of Maryland. I've been tested, I testified as an expert witness in every county and almost every municipality in the town, and there was no professional engagement with another professional on the town side. You hired Michael Baker International to do your comprehensive plan. It would have been very valuable, I think, for the town to reach out to Michael Baker with the proposal and get their input and see what they said in regards, in regards to the comprehensive plan. What were they thinking about? Although I respect Joe very, very much, I don't know that Joe's a professional planner. And so I think it would have been very valuable for the town to.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. I, I think you've made your point with respect to, I mean, we're, now we're calling out Joe's expertise level. Is there? Oh, I felt that's exactly what was happening there. Well, actually, actually.
All right, so.
Actually, it's not time for, for the public to respond. This, this was my attempt to, to curb that part of, of your comments because you've made your point. You would like to have seen the town take consultation with a professional planner for the review of this process that included our planning commission.
And thank you very much.
You're welcome, Sean. Thank you. Okay, it's 8:05. I'd like to begin with our public comment session, section of our public hearing.
If I may.
Oh, so sorry.
But my, my calculus, I think we have about 10 minutes left.
Well, actually, I was, I was told you guys would, would be needing approximately an hour, but then the opening comments indicated you guys were ready to do this in 20, so.
If I may, I think we started at 8:15. I have it on here. I have the clock running and it's, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's fine. I assumed that you were, you were finished because all three of you had spoken.
It's good.
Proceed.
Okay. So real quick, the most important thing here for all of us is preserving these buildings. I've been doing this for 30 years. The town owned these buildings for nearly two decades, and it underscores how difficult it is to plug the gap, the difference between the cost of historic preservation, of renovating and returning these buildings to productive service. It is so hard to plug that gap between that and value, the cost and value. This, it's estimated on this project that we have a $31 million gap in the buildings alone, and those are pre-COVID and pre-Ukraine estimates. When I got involved in this with Roger as his consultant initially and then as his partner subsequently, speaking to folks with the state and the governor's office and the legislature, including local rep, local delegates, local senators, everybody knew that there was going to have to be an ask of the state to help us and the federal government to help us plug this gap. And so at the end of the day, we've finally cracked this problem, and it's a, it's solved by a combination of tax credits and tax advantaged financing. A lot of it, a lot of it circles around housing. Some of it technically does not, but the problem is that they, it's an all of the above approach. You need all of the credits to plug that gap. The gap's not $15 million, it's 31 and growing. So as we've said before, we've worked very closely with Senator Hester to not only four years ago, study these campuses statewide, not just Warfield, but to create a steering committee to study these campuses around the state and figure out how to make them work. Because a lot of them are located in rural areas where you don't have the benefit of an urban market to bail you out in terms of high rents and high sales prices. One of the recommendations, there were a couple of recommendations, we're going to bounce around a little bit because I, I'll try to take, not take the full 20, but the, this study, and I, I worked on this study group with the Secretary of Planning and with others, advancing the preservation and reuse of Maryland's historic complexes. You can find it on our website. You can find it on the state's, State Department of Planning's website. Two really important recommendations were create a catalytic tax credit that was modeled after what was done in the state of Ohio under Senator, under Governor Kasich with his depart, is their historic preservation arm. And the other thing that was recognized, not just with Warfield, but with these campuses around the state, is that there needed to be land use that was based, land use decisions, zoning that was based in reality that would meet the market if you're going to save these things. And by the way, the state, when they make an investment in something, is, actually, it's, they're no different than private capital in terms of wanting to see a return on their investment. They do not want to see us invest the $15 million catalytic tax credit that we were awarded to sit, to, to go into buildings that are going to sit for 20 years or for however long, 10 years, five years. They're going to want to see the tax, the tax, the taxpayer money that they're investing getting a return. There was a recent study by the Abel Foundation about the historic tax credit program in, in Maryland. As deficient as it is, okay, as deficient as it is, the payback period on the state's investment when they invest tax credit dollars smartly is five, six years. And the economic output for every dollar of tax credits invested, when invested in the right project, is over $8. It's an eight to one ratio. So we basically followed the recommendations of the state, and we went out and we said, okay, well, who's going to create the catalytic tax credit category? Well, we did, and, and thank God for Senator Hester in, in shepherding that through. But I can tell you that I wrote that sitting down with the Department of Legislative Services, and I know what it says, and I know what the intention was. And I know this project and what it costs, and the notion that the $15 million gets the job done is just not correct. The other things that we need are federal low income tax credits, federal historic preservation tax credits. We also need, frankly, the other thing that comes with housing is tax exempt bond debt that is often paired by the Department of Housing and Community Development with these deals. So we've got 30 million plus 21 million in tax exempt bond debt and other programs such as DHCD grants and a program called Rental Housing, Rental Housing Works, which is a subordinated debt gap, gap financing program specifically for housing. If the work, if the commercial market were strong here, we, and we had a user for 200, 300, 400, 500,000 square feet, I can promise you as a for-profit developer, we would do it. And you have to ask yourself why it didn't happen before if it's a solution. So what we are proposing for the, and a couple of other things, what we are proposing for the remainder of parcel D, and let's just break it down real quick. There are currently three rehabilitated buildings occupied. That's, they're about 28,000 square feet. We've got nine unrehabilitated vacant buildings and then two ancillary structures. We have on staff or on, on retainer, an architect who specializes in historic preservation. We also have a special, somebody who specializes in working with the National Park Service and Maryland Historical, Maryland Historic Trust. And we've come up with some conceptual plans that we just want to throw back out there for folks to see as my parting, parting piece of the presentation here. This is a current, and I'm sorry for folks in the audience who maybe can't see it, is a current aerial view of parcel D, and it's a shame that, I don't know if it looks any better from straight on.
We waste no time.
What I will do is show you, this is a rendering that shows, and I'll point it out since you can't really see the colors, I'll try my best. The existing buildings are in a darker color and then additions, which are very common with these projects to make them connect and to make them handicapped accessible, to make them, to make them, you know, work together and get us to a critical mass. Those new buildings are in yellow, and we can get this to anybody who needs, who needs it. I'm sorry that you can't see it. And this is a rendering of what, one, one possible concept of what it would look like. In the middle, you, and you can't really see unfortunately because of the light, the materials, the materials are consistent, but the, but you always try to differentiate between what's new and what's old while still being consistent in terms of scale, in terms of the type and quality of materials. So thank you for the, the time, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation. Looked forward to it for a while. Okay, so without further ado, it appears we have a good deal of, or a good number, I should say, of individuals who have submitted their desire at the door to speak to us this evening. I think somewhere around 40, that was the last count. I think I saw some other people walk in, but we'll just say it's around 40, and because of that, I think we're going to limit comments to, to one minute per person. And for the record, I want to let everyone know that the town has received 20 written comments ahead of this evening. I have it here. Thank you, President Carter. And it appears that, I mean, I would say that 18 of them would be in the opposed category, two in like more leaning towards they're concerned but looking for more information, and no comments received express support for the zoning text amendment. So what I'm going to do, actually, let me just read I've written so, because I, I thought this out really long, so. So as I said, we'll, we'll keep things to one minute each comment. I'll call a group of people up to the microphone based upon the number you were provided when you registered to speak this evening. Please listen to the range of numbers that I announce and then form a single file line at the podium. You do not need to stand in numerical order within your group. So let's start with group one through 10. And ahead of this, thank you so much, everyone so far for your patience.
Mayor, if, if we did want to give more time to each individual, we can do that. There's.
Yeah.
With only, with only 40 people signed up, that's, that's okay.
Okay. Do we want to go for two minutes? Would that, would that be acceptable to everyone here in the room? Certainly. And let, let me go as far as to say this. Please begin your comment by stating your name or the group, if any, on whose behalf you wish to speak. Should you come to the end of your comment before the expiration of your two-minute allotted time, that's not a bad thing. I assure you that your brevity will be awarded in gratitude by those who are behind you in line. But certainly feel free to use all of your time if necessary. Do we have the clock set for two minutes? Carrie, of course we do. Thank you. So when you, when you, when you begin speaking, please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Jane Merkler on Central Avenue. I've lived here for a number of years. I've come from Ellicott City after the floods, and I'm sure Ellicott City and other towns down river are interested in what, what we're doing because it's all one system, all one watershed system. One of the things that strikes me is that I have a question of what is good development? I think it's important that we reuse existing structures and that we reuse them in a sustainable, environmentally sensitive way. But I have never seen so many grants, bank loans, I assume that it's not coming out of your pockets, and state and federal tax credits lined up and then for people to say, or for the group to say, we need more to, for this to be successful. What skin do they have in this game? To me, it's just a, a standard approach for the developers who really don't understand the character of a community. Because one of the signs of a, of a developer that doesn't understand is that they keep changing the goalposts, and that doesn't work. They throw around things about how many student to teacher ratios, the county school system says it's okay. They start talking about stormwater runoff a little bit. They don't talk about air quality. They don't talk about the importance of green space or jobs to our community. So in conclusion, I'd like to say, we don't need old style developers. We need developers that are community based and have a vision for saving historic structures as cornerstones of the development. And I think that's a community development group, not a private sector development group. And I think that's a community development group, not a private sector development group. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane.
Hello, my name's Ian Shaw. Older court.
Thank you.
Older drive, actually. Anyway, so as the former mayor, and I'm just telling you, the current proposal is nothing at all what we anticipated at the start of this negotiations. And, you know, so God rest his soul, Dennis Hoover, you know, many people told us during the sale of this property on the Warfield Development Board, which I was a member of as the mayor, that the developers would never do what this planned employment center zoning was. And I told Dennis, I said, so Dennis, they're saying they're not going to ever do this. And he said, well, they'll have to because this is the way the zoning is. We spent countless hours on the view shed, so don't look at that piece that they had up there and think that that's how this place is going to turn out. It's not, okay? It's not going to look like that. The plant, pattern book won't allow it. We spent massive amounts of time on just the view sheds, much to their consternation, with professionals, by the way, just to get those sightlines right, you know? So, that was important. The, the design of the buildings is important. We understand the golf, but make no mistake, and I want to get this in there, federal tax increment financing will not fit most of the residents of Sykesville and Carroll County. And those people can live from anywhere with a voucher that they bring from any other place and come here. So, I just want you to be aware about. There's a shortage of housing in many areas, and that's why they want this. It's so attractive to get those people to live in our communities, come into our schools and in our towns. But they're not the workforce from Carroll County, okay? So, don't, that's not what workforce housing is. Dig into it, check it out. So, it's disappointing to hear, but we're, look, I'll say this because I've got five seconds. Look at St. John's, there's only 18,000 square foot. When they started, there was, that place was empty, okay? It's almost full. So, to say that this is not possible is, is not accurate. So, thank you for taking that.
Thank you, Ian. Ricky.
Hey, guys, my name's Ricardo, and I'm one of the new homeowners in Parkside Warfield, Team Warfield. I forgot to bring my tie, I didn't know it was a famous thing. But a couple of things I wanted to bring out, so, to, first to Steve's team, my neighbor and I, since the first meeting as a new homeowner at Parkside Warfield, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't agree to Steve's plan. And ever since then, we've never been part of any development meeting or informational use. All the, all the other people that don't know what's going on and they try to move towards their ideal, they get the notifications. However, the ones that don't, the ones that disagree do not get notifications from that. Second thing I want to bring out is that when we moved into Parkside Warfield, this was told that that was the last homes being built in this community. And that brought a lot of attention to homeowners like myself. And it's a big investment. And when you come into this, and then now you're going to get told that you're going to get 6.5 units per acre, that not only drops the equity of our home, but it also brings crime rate, makes the school traffic allow, longer, and it's just, it's bigger of a mess than what the homeowners that moved into the town and wanted a quiet community. And lastly, June is the fourth year mark for your team, and there hasn't been any project, anything changed on those buildings that you keep saying you want to work on and you care about, you know? And it's very disappointing for us to hear that you keep sugarcoating on it, that it's all about the buildings. I think this is more of a leadership issue and agreed problem, but that's all I have.
Speaking of a riser or a bumper seat, huh? Booster seat.
Barbara McCloskey always had.
She did, indeed.
My name is Lois Roberts. I live on Norris Avenue. My main concern is the fact that this corporation is already in, whatever the word is, default of their original commitment, that they would use part of the $1 million, the sale price that Sykesville could have used for different things. They set that aside for the use of this Warfield, historic Warfield. They were to use the profits from selling the houses and the money from Sykesville and now additional money in order to restore those properties. They have not kept up with that agreement. So, instead of coming to us and saying, we're really sorry, we haven't been able to do this, will you grant us an extension or slightly change so we could build a few more houses? They've come to us totally reversing what the original plan was without doing, with hardly any work, even to the extent of putting good roofs on these historic buildings. They are in default, and yet they are asking for a complete change instead of coming with their hat in hand and saying, we're sorry.
Thank you, Lois. I guess I shouldn't be complaining about needing a seat, a booster seat. I'm sorry to see you limping.
Jason, I also live in a new neighborhood with Ricardo.
Thank you.
We moved up here due to, I'm a Pennsyltucky boy, she's from Wisconsin, just based off of, this was reminded us of back home. I'm a police officer in a local jurisdiction, I may not look like it, but I get a substantial tax credit to live in the county I work in. I chose to move here due to peace. I didn't move out here due to have five-story business complex, more housing, and I'm not an expert, but I can say through 17 and a half years of experience, if moderate and low-income housing is put in, it's a good program. It's intended for good. It's abused and taken advantage of, I can tell you that. It's going to cause a lot of issues for a smaller police department and bring down property values, in my personal opinion, just from 17 and a half years of working. Probably going to sound repetitive, there was a lot of talk of historic preservation. There was no, anything showing of any abilities to do any kind of historic preservation, even just tarps on roofs or anything to prevent water damage to those older buildings. Also, a vision of Sykesville, I don't know if any gentlemen live in Sykesville or Carroll County, but I assume not. If there's a vision, I would at least listen to what the people actually who live here have to say. That's all.
Thank you, Jason.
Short person again. Hi, Michelle Flynn. I know you all know me as Mickey, if you know me. I live at 7309 Brown Street. I'm a math teacher. I look like this because five to six times a week, I walk on the Warfield complex. So, I've seen what's happening there. Not, not exactly pleased. I think as a math teacher, I'm reminded that there are lies, damn lies, and then there's statistics, and we all had to sit and listen to that tonight. And so, I'm going to lie, I'm going to do a little pep talk here for the council, because you, my fellow townpeople, are who I put my faith in to figure out what's going on. There's a lot of they said, they said, they said that I obviously heard tonight. And I, I come away with two concerns, really. The first one is, I was here when Mayor Shaw was talking about, I voted to annex that property. We voted to annex that, annex that property because we wanted control of that property. And so, I'm concerned, slightly offended, actually, by the little video of here's what we can do, here's the worst thing we can do. And yeah, okay, so now we're going to do this not-as-bad thing, and you should be happy with that, right? And that makes me, that doesn't rub me the right way. And I hope it doesn't rub you the right way either. And then my second thing that I have problem with is saying that the number-one priority is those historic buildings. Wrong. The number-one priority for us as townspeople is maintaining our way of life and not creating whatever this is. Like Mayor Shaw said, when we were presented with that as townspeople and voted to annex, we were specifically told that this was not what was going to happen. So, I entrust you, these people that I voted, to fight the good fight, my friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey.
Hello. My name's Dana Alonzi. I live at 7307 Spout Hill Road. I have come to mayor and town council meetings before to voice concerns about, I think the last time I came, there was an annexation thing going on with a developer. And I said, please, no, please, no. I've been a resident of the town for 18 years. I work at Johns Hopkins Bayview Medical Center in Baltimore, and for 18 years, I have been making that hellish commute to Baltimore. So, if you've ever heard me complain at one of these meetings, it's been about traffic. And that's what I'm here to complain about again. And I, I am no expert. I heard your, I know you guys cited that your plan would actually be less of an impact on traffic, but just anecdotally, I, I'm here to tell you, that seems impossible to me, that that many more people living over there could, could not be, add to the already major problem on 70, 32, 26, 97. Who in this room takes those roads to work in the morning and comes home in the afternoon on those roads? And keep your hand up if you think it's already terrible and would be more terrible. So, I just, it, it, please vote no.
Thank you, Dana. So, I read the numbers one through 10, and I only heard from seven. Are there other, three other people with a number between one and 10? Okay. So, then I guess we'll jump to 11 to 20, or let's, yeah, let's say 11 to 20. And if someone can't stand that long in the line, just stay close and pop up when the line's getting lower, as long as you're between 11 through 20. Thank you.
I'll just go ahead and start here.
Great, thank you.
Rob Blitz, I'm at 7303 Spout Hill Road.
Pick up.
Tall.
Sorry. Rob Blitz. So, I, I heard a lot about, from the developers, a concern about the marketability of the Warfield complex. And while I'm not insensitive to investors' needs to market their, their property, as a resident, we make investments in our community. And, you know, our families, our homes are our investments. And one of the major concerns I have is just the, the character of the community. I would really hate to see a major change in Sykesville. I came here 20 years ago from Columbia. I saw that town grow up and become really difficult to navigate and had concerns about crime. Moved here, and this semi, semi-rural landscape was ideal for the, the growth of my family. And I hope that that, that sort of character remains a part of Sykesville and Southern Carroll for a long time, because I think it's an extreme benefit for, for all of the residents here. So, I'd urge the, the council to vote no on the, on the amendment.
Thank you, Rob.
It's Jim McTagg from Vantage Point Drive. And I much want to echo what my, one of my neighbors had indicated as the reason that the town voted to annex Warfield. It was really important that we, we control the types of facilities that were going to be on this property. You know, I'll tell you, you know, reading through the document, there's an awful lot of additions, an awful lot of redlining as to what the board has the opportunity to review and approve. And, you know, just one thing from my past life is, you know, hotel and motel is X-ed out. I mean, I used to have a small hotel here, but not a Motel 6. I mean, if it was something, a courtyard or a residence center or something like that, it would add value and not detract. So, I think, I think that's really important. One, one thing that I didn't read in this, and maybe I haven't been following it enough, we're talking about garages and those types of things, and they're basically buildings without roofs on them. They need to be maintained, and the sand traps or whatever collects the oil that drains out of that and so forth. I don't know whose responsibility that's going to be to maintain, who absorbs that The last thing I, I question is, is that what guarantees do we have that we're going to take care of, of these buildings after all, some of this stuff is done? And one other thing I would say too, is this, seems that on both sides, there's a little adversarial relationship here. And I think that, you know, people really need to start to talk together and figure it out. I, I can see why, you know, when, when you get something like this with all this red and additions and that type of thing, it could become adversarial. So, maybe we can do a little sit-down type of thing with the town and, and the Warfield complex to figure out something that's going to work in the long term and be best for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And we come back down again. I'm Righty Deary. I live on Neal Court. I'm also a business owner, merchant on Main, on Main Street. My husband and I moved here 33 years ago. There was one traffic light, 26 and 32. I've watched all the changes happen. I commuted for 30 years into Baltimore City, Hunt Valley, or Timonium. It sucked. So, I now have a four-minute commute, very happy every day, able to live and work in my community. I am sad to know that everyone came here this evening with a preconceived idea. They already had their mind made up. It didn't matter what these guys were saying. They knew what they wanted to say when they came in. I kept jotting down all sorts of different things. I agree with the last person that you should have a sit-down, talk non-adversarially, see what happened. I know when we came here in the 80s, a lot of other people came in the 80s. I'd like to know how many thousand people came between 1975 and 1995. Do you know that number? Oh. So, I would like to know how many thousand people came. It seems to me that that has added to the character of the town. A lot of you were coming around in the same about timeframe. I think that we've made a nice change to the town, and we can benefit. And who's to say that another 1,500 people coming in wouldn't do the same thing? I'm an architect's daughter. I want the historic preservation. I've seen in other places like Milwaukee, like Johns Hopkins where I used to work, they were always changing that campus. And they're integrating old into new, and it's lovely, it's doable, I think it can be done. And I think you should just have a much more open mind. Before I got here tonight, I was told by someone in my shop that these guys are sleaze balls. I don't think there's a place for that. I don't think the conversation should go that adversarially. I think people should be nice, be kind, it's all over the town, do the same thing.
Thank you, Righty.
Hello, my name's Danny. I live at, on Springfield Ave. I'm opposed to the amendment. I believe that the spirit of the original zoning reflects one of our greatest community assets, Main Street. Main Street is the commercial and community hub of Sykesville. Main Street is mixed-use zoning. It combines residential, office, retail alongside walkable paths and parks. Mixed-use zoning is a formula that works for Sykesville. Mixed-use zoning brings our community together for events, makes Sykesville a desirable place to live, raise a family, and spend money. I believe that the developer zoning proposal is unbalanced. It will not result in the rich mixed-use area that is currently working for Sykesville Main Street. I do think it's extremely important to ensure that we're creating marketable assets, but mixed-use zoning is a formula that has proven to work for Sykesville. And I don't think that the zoning amendment is in the town's best interest, and it deviates from this formula. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
I'm an architect, and I specialize in senior living and very large housing development programs. My question, I only have one question, is if a market study's been done, how much profit will be made on the different schemes that were presented this evening? With the commercial aspect and the residential densities? If there's been a study done on how much it's going to cost and how much profit the developers will be making off of each of the schemes presented this evening? Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
My name is Steve Jones. I am a resident of Sykesville for the past 37 years. I live at 7150 Harlan Lane. I am hearing tonight some things that I'd rather not hear. One of those things is about affordable housing. We need affordable housing. People who live in this community came to this community, as I did, and were welcomed here. No questions asked. People who come to this community should not be questioned about their, where they work, their background, anything like that. It's time to stop all of that. It is also time to question, as we add affordable housing, whether we need to add commercial real estate. People are working from home now. I think that's going to stay the way things are. So while we're developing the affordable housing that should be built here, we should also be careful to remember that there's a lot of commercial real estate that is vacant in various areas of the Baltimore metropolitan area and the Washington metropolitan area. So I would prefer more housing, affordable housing, and less commercial development. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and just like that, we went through that line. Okay. I'm at number 14. Let's, anyone with a number between 21 and 30, please come to the podium.
I have two statements. I represent myself and my view, and I'm also part of the Citizen Advisory Council, and I wanted to present our neighborhood's view that I've taken over the past few months.
Can you introduce yourself, please, John? Thank you.
John Mudrick. I live at 299 Calarama Road. First, I want to thank the developers for coming and giving your perspective and your insight into it. I think it's important. I think what I heard is you guys were shocked that it was a take it or leave it proposal, that you are willing to work with the council. If that's news to the council, good. If you're not willing to work with the council, that's not a good sign. I think we need to talk about the adversarial relationship being put aside, and we should work together to find a solution here. My wife and I have lived in Calarama Road for 28 years. The main reason we came here and raised our family here was the character and the charm and the hermitage of a long-term plan that's been put in place. It's very important. It's a special town. We all know that. We want to maintain that. We feel that these changes being requested do neither of those. It changes dramatically what we envisioned the town to be going forward. So we've entered into this agreement with the developer, if we've entered into agreement with this developer that's not willing to work with the town and abide to the contract that's been finalized, then maybe we need to look elsewhere to get this plan going, because it's a very important piece of property, we feel. So as it's written now and as it's been presented to our town council, my wife and I are strongly against a proposal that's been presented for consideration. So also, I'm a neighborhood representative for the Sykesville Citizens Advisory Council, and the feedback that I've received from many of my neighbors has been unanimous. The reasons listed are varied, but have the common themes that have been mentioned here, lack of infrastructure, roads, fire, police, schools, water, et cetera. The perception and the words that are written give us the feeling that the developers trying to place as many homes as possible and to make as much money as possible without thought or concern to the town plans. Maybe that's not the case, but that's how it's being perceived as my neighbors read through these changes. The changes don't address the town goals in developing Warfield for the 10-year plan and said they favor meeting the economic goals of the developer. These changes run counter to the goals of the Warfield Development Project, as evidenced by the increase in restrictions. So the neighborhood feedback was that this proposal should be rejected by the town council. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi. I'm Mark Richwalski. I live on Spout Hill Road. And in 1998, I was on the council, where you guys are sitting. And the reason why the town got involved is we were concerned about what type of developments can happen over at Warfield. When the state decided to go ahead and unload some of the land over there, we decided that the town should have input and control over what type of development happened. And one of the main concerns was what was going to happen to the historic buildings. The historic buildings aren't getting fixed. They haven't been fixed since day one. There's been three of them done privately by other groups. And a lot of money's been made off of this current development. The houses are selling for $530,000. So there's money that's been made, and the properties, historic buildings have not been preserved in any way, shape, or form. The real reason why we went ahead and decided to annex the property, have town control, and have input from the residents and control by the residents is to prevent the type of proposal that we're seeing today. And I didn't come here with a preconceived notion. You know, we understand that times change. We understand that, that, that programs and policies have to change and projects have to change, but they don't have to change to this extent. That's my concern. I would really ask the council not to make any changes until there's a guarantee and we see some actual repairs done to the buildings over there, minimal repairs, because basically at this point, they're really in violation of the ordinance, the town ordinance, historic preservation ordinance of demolition by neglect. If you go over and walk and look at those buildings, and I've been over there, it breaks my heart. I don't want to look at them anymore. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi there. My name is Andrea St. Clair, and I live on shimmering round Court with my family of five. And I serve on a number of committees in the public school system. You can ask my husband, there are far too many to list in a two-minute period, so let's just keep moving. The county projections, which come directly from the master facilities planner for Carroll County Public Schools, is that for every residential dwelling, .6 children, not .4, as the developer had stated earlier, will attend school. For this upcoming, for this upzoning request, the math works out to be 308 children to the new, new children to the CCPS system. While our high school would have no problem absorbing the extra students, Piney Ridge and Sykesville Middle, the building that we are currently standing in, will be severely impacted by those numbers. Before any of these potential houses are built in five years, my daughter will go to this school, where it is currently projected to be at 117% capacity, again, before any of these houses are being built. Many of you are aware that there's already a Southern Area Redistricting Committee addressing the current redistricting issues, and another 300 students would push that into crisis situation. I'm not necessarily against development in our area, but I am very much against the underplaying the impact that this development will have on our schools and our traffic patterns. I would love to sit down and have a conversation with the developer. I, we tried to schedule one earlier in the week, but we weren't able to do so. Again, I'm not against the development. I'm very much against the impact that it's going to have on our school system and traffic patterns.
Thank you, Andrea.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Beck. I am not a resident of Sykesville, though I am a business owner. With so many of you gathered, I just want to say Beck's is celebrating their 30th anniversary this July. And really, from the bottom of Scott and my heart, I want to say thank you. You have given my family an incredible life. So I might not rest my head on a pillow in Sykesville, but my heart is very, very much invested in Sykesville. The benefit and sometimes the curse of having been around for so long is that you go through these cycles and you see development of these policies. And I'm not sure how many people are aware, but in 1996, the state didn't come to us. Sykesville went to the state before they were even ready to annex the property and asked to be on the list, to be available to annex it. So this has been going on for a long time, countless years. There were promises made for colleges to come, web-based businesses, the Department of Social Services. And the businesses on Main Street waited patiently and wanted it, believe me, because we didn't have the traffic Monday through Thursday that we enjoyed on the weekends. So those businesses would bring us a lot of profit, we were hoping. But it didn't happen. So I know some of you are standing up here and you're concerned this group's been disingenuous. And what I'm saying is, it's not that the market changed. The market was never there. This is like a square peg we keep shoving in a round hole. So we do need new ideas. Now, I'm not here to say I agree or disagree with the text amendment. What I don't agree with was what I was shown in 2014. The town council began negotiations with a group, some of these people were principals in it, that wanted 150,000 square feet of retail up there. I was told by a town council person that who cares if they put a Starbucks there? I like the French twist. Well, I think the French twist cared. I think they cared a lot. So our tenure then became very dicey for the town because we were fresh and new and just growing. So I didn't really feel like our interests on Main Street were really being listened to by the council or the developer, and it was a frightening time. Since then, I've seen that the market studies have been done, and that retail's been reduced to 35,000. So all I'm saying tonight to the town council is, I don't know whether the annexation is good or bad for Sykesville. I know more rooftops insulate the town, lifts up your retailers on Main Street, gives them foot traffic. If you plan to grow Main Street by adding more retail spaces, we need, we need more foot traffic. If you're going to add retail up there, we need more foot traffic. This is a small town because of Main Street. You have invested in us. More people investing in Main Street by more houses is good. We were insulated from the catastrophe of COVID because you all embraced us and you kept us going. We need more people like you. And before I go, I just want to point out that many of you who may be scared of the residential impact, in 1995, or 1990 to 2000, the town population grew by 2,000 people. Many of you are sitting in the neighborhoods. 500 homes were built. How many people at the time living on First Avenue, Second Avenue, Third Avenue are right where you are today? And I understand that. I get that. That's scary. Scary schools. I'm a parent. My kids have gone through the school system. But I would argue that the 2,000-some people that came with that development gave Sykesville the best years, the best years. We developed a downtown Sykesville connection. We have a vibrant Main Street.
Yeah, we're over. Yeah, I didn't hear it. I'm sorry, Rachel. We've got to, I, we're over two minutes. I didn't even hear it beep.
I'm sorry. I appreciate your time, and again, thank you for 30 years.
How did I not hear it? I don't know. Thank you, Rachel. Just throw your hand up at me, Carrie. Just dance if you have to.
Hello, the cross coach over there. Hello, everyone. My name is Laura Smith. Sorry, I'm very short. So my name is Laura Smith. I have been a resident of Sykesville since 1987. I chose to move back here with my husband because of the charm of Sykesville, because of affordability. I work in Howard County. I'm a dental hygienist, and I'm an educator. I could not afford to live in Howard County. And guess what? I could not afford to live in the house I live now, thanks to the current situation. I just want to say thank you for pointing out that we need to be kind to one another. Thank you for pointing out that there has been some lack of availability to speak to both parties. I was able to attend a virtual meeting with Steve, who is representative of the Warfield Group. And I also was able to attend a town community meeting. So I have been able to, unlike many people, see both sides of the story. I would oppose this particular amendment because I personally don't like the ratios of where the different required percentage land use, but that doesn't matter because I'm not the one voting on it. I would love to be a part of the vision at the end, as Roger, if you were Roger, that that would be, we have great ideas, but right now, what I think we need to do is come together. I think we need to be smart and strategic and think about sustainability. And I think we need to move forward and get these buildings started. Let's start the progress. So I don't know, I guess that's against the amendment, but let's get started. Let's work together. We love this town.
Thank you, Laura.
Hi. My name is Julie Delamaria. I live 7411 Second Avenue. And I have to admit, I did come here with a little bit of, an idea of what my position was, but also with a hope to learn more. And the reason why I had a little bit of an idea is because I watched all the meetings. Even if I missed it, I replayed it, and you also can consult the minutes of the meeting on the, on the town of Sykesville website if you wish, and that's very informative and helps to follow everything. And my personal opinion, as a resident of Sykesville, is that there is a vast underestimate of the number of people that would end up living here with the current model, because I really don't know how you convince people to make only .7 children. And that, and that growth, what has made Sykesville, what is Sykesville identity, is that smart growth, that we have experiences of on Main Street, which is a mixed use that has been done, that people that care, that live here, and you see it, you drive through it. And that's what has created an emotional connection with the place for me, and I'm sure for everyone here. And I am not sure that the model proposed is going to preserve this. So I would be against, against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Fred Gosage, business owner on Main Street, property owner on Main Street. I do not live in Sykesville. I live in West Friendship. However, my son in the back of the room and my daughter-in-law do live off of Main Street. Although it would help my, my business a lot, bring more residents in, I'm a State Farm Insurance agent. Oh, wow. To have that many more hundreds of people to insure, that would be great. However, from a personal standpoint, from what I see of the whole picture, I would be against it. I think that the residents should have the main vote, not myself as a stakeholder. You all live here. I go home at night, and I think it should be, I mean, I just take a vote of the, of the citizens in saying, hey, what, what do you want to see? I'm not so sure there wouldn't be a happy medium, but I'm against that much residential growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Dan Anderson. I live at 7411 Second Avenue. I wanted to first acknowledge and thank the mayor and town council for holding this hearing. And not only you, but the planning commission, for all the, all the opportunities that the Warfield Development Group has had to kind of present the plan. I acknowledge your, you know, your process, you know, your patience and your effort and due diligence. I don't think I would have that fortitude. I urge you to vote no on this amendment. As I understand, well, there's a, there's a few reasons. One, as I understand it, it's not only the Warfield property, but as the developers also stated, it's the, the integrated property as well that would fall under this zoning amendment. So not only Warfield, but that property, if they so wish, they could develop six instead of two and a half people per acre. So that's a dramatic increase. I don't like it when people come up here and talk about irregularities, like I just said. You got, you know, the record shows, as Joe so rightly pointed out, there's been multiple opportunities and the town urging for amendments to be made to this amendment. And it hasn't happened. It hasn't come to fruition. So to talk about irregularities is a bit much, in my opinion. I don't know why developers need a private meeting with the mayor if you can't have those conversations out in the open or put it in writing. opportunities and the town urging for amendments to be made to this amendment, and it hasn't happened, it hasn't come to fruition. So to talk about irregularities is a bit much, in my opinion. I don't know why developers need a private meeting with the mayor. If you can't have those conversations out in the open or put it in writing, then it shouldn't be done. That's not what open government's about. So I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the mayor's memory isn't as long as she thought. We're at 31 to 40. I think I'm taking notes.
My name is Tiffany Yetman. I'm on Anna Lane, which is not in the town limits, but I am the school nurse at Piney Ridge Elementary School, and so I do see the growth. I've been the school nurse there for 18 years. I've been a resident here for 48 years, which is my age, so I've lived here all my life. My parents have lived here for more than that. So I love this community. I work here, I love it. I love, our students are from the Warfield complex, and we welcome them, we love them. But we definitely are seeing an increase in our school. Piney Ridge is a very small school. I'm not sure how that planning ever got to be, that whole land there. So we're already at 80 students registered for our kindergarten, with projected more for over the summer. We already have 20 seats available for our pre-K, which will be filled. Last year, our transfers in, so maybe your projections were new students coming, new kindergarten, new students, new pre-K students. Our transfer ends were like, off the top of it, I'm gonna round out around 50 kids. It's a lot of our first through fifth grade students. Our classrooms, we're not at capacity, but we're definitely at our holding. We're very strained. We did take away a portable, but yet we have no more room. We are at five kindergarten classrooms for this year and next year. We'll be increasing classroom sizes next year as well, like adding on another teacher, because it's just growth, and it's wonderful, it's growth. I'm so happy to see it grow. I mean, it does mean more economic increase for our community, for our downtown, and they support our school so much, our local merchants, so we appreciate that so much. Schoolhouse Road does such an amazing things with our children at Piney Ridge, and so we're so thankful for them. I am just concerned about the increase of what it will cost to our police department and our, the strain on the fire department, our EMS. I mean, they're so desperate for help, and so that is worrisome for me as well. I do think that we can increase, of course, population of more housing, but then does that mean where are we pushing them out to? Where are they spending their money? Are we really going to Walmart every Saturday and spending our money there? I know a lot of people still go to Columbia, a lot of people still go down Owens Mills. It's what they know is more convenient. I, for one, do never travel on 32 from 3:30 to 5:30 because it's gonna take me 25 minutes to get to Walmart, so I go over to Lisbon and hit the food line over there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Tiffany.
Hey, my name is Lauren. I live off of Sperry Way at Parkside at Warfield. I'm guessing it was named after Joseph Evans Sperry, one of the architects at Springfield. I'd like to say that I think your team did a really good job at getting Lennar over there initially. I think it was a really financially smart move, but I think now it was somewhat of a negligent move, because I think you guys have run out of resident capacity to be able to take advantage of all the extra financial incentives that you've been able to acquire. I think instead you should have, if this had, in total, the whole time, had been about allowing different kinds of populations to move here, I think where Lennar sits, where I get to be housed basically, it should have been where those residences should have been, which would have given you a lot of free money to be able to work on Springfield for other kinds of projects. But unfortunately, you guys did it a little too fast. So if you guys look at the pattern book, on page one, just to reiterate, you guys have your vision, which, again, is to connect Main Street to Warfield, to Springfield Hospital. And one of the big parts of the guidebook was about signage, and the Parkside at Warfield sign has so much like to, it's like bringing people off 32 to say, hey, this is Sykesville. This is Sykesville, not just the downtown Sykesville sign. It's to bring people's attention to the town. There is a guidebook that's so many pages, there's a pattern book that's so many pages, and I feel like you guys are forgetting, like, you were a part of those pages, you read them, chapter by chapter by chapter. And now we're changing the priority, we're changing it from connecting Main Street to Warfield and trying to strengthen that bond between the two areas of Sykesville, and trying to draw attention to Sykesville through signage, through just like beautiful, like revitalization of the properties where you can see it off the road, and it's attracting attention in business. But instead, now we're trying to convince people that all of that, all of the pattern book, all of the guidelines are miscellaneous, because we need to be able to fulfill these other needs financially. And that's my personal opinion on the direction that this is going.
Thank you, Lauren. Somebody said be kind, I mean, but we gotta get out of here, you guys. Let's go. Thank you.
My name is Steven Kunsaski. I live on Harlan Lane in Hawcridge, which was supposed to be the last housing development in the town of Sykesville, but as we have seen, that has not occurred. There've been two other developments since then. Long when, I came in here in 1995, and have seen many changes happen over, over the years through Sykesville. A big one was right around 2000, when the town was asking us to annex Warfield. They showed us a great plan of smart growth that was going to combine residential, businesses, and open space. Ever since then, I've seen that plan change not so smart. Open space originally was supposed to be 50%, now it's 25% in the plans. We're looking now at this latest proposal that housing, residential's, could be as much as 70% in there, in the, in the development, and non-residential is down to less, no less than 5%. So we've seen this, this looks like a balance that's not very smart between housing, businesses, and the open space. My request to the council is to go back to that original plan, look at that vision, and embrace that, and do not approve this amendment. Stay true to the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Steven.
My name's Howard Sazlo. I live at 7241 Norris Avenue. My wife and I have lived in the town for 30 years. We've raised four kids here. 37 years ago, we drove through downtown Sykesville, looked at each other, and said there ain't no way we'd ever live here. But here we are. It's a wonderful town, and even though I may not have always agreed with what the town council does, I applaud the town council for doing a phenomenal job of guiding this town. I'm a builder. I actually partnered with the town of Sykesville to develop a building downtown, nothing as big as you guys do, but I partnered with the town of Sykesville. Right now, we have zoning that will drive what you gentlemen do here. What you're asking for is to change the zoning, which will give you far more latitude and violate the intent of what the town council decided when they annexed Warfield. I am pro-development. I need lots to build houses. I'm pro-responsible development. Anybody that looks at where Columbia started at in 1968, and where it is today, and the difference in the subdivisions, I like the old town, old part of Columbia. I don't like the new part of Columbia. And I understand there's economics in that, there always is, and everybody has a right to make a profit. I want them to make a profit. I don't want them to lose money. We want them to make a profit, but it has to be done responsibly. So I'm against this amendment, but I do want you to partner with us to ensure that what you build and what gets built is responsible and is what reflects the character of our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Hi, my name is Frank Roke, and I don't live in the town of Sykesville, but I have a considerable amount of money invested in real estate in the town of Sykesville, and I used to own a very prominent Main Street business here that many people here are familiar My business that I owned in Sykesville wouldn't have been particularly successful in a, without the people that moved here back in the 80s that we've all heard so much about at this point in time. And that was certainly, that certainly factors into a conversation like this. However, I'd like to point out a couple of things. I appreciate what you guys are doing and the amount of effort you guys are putting into this. It's certainly a very daunting task. A really difficult point in an old town like this is how to maintain historical, historical relevance and to keep things going forward without losing where we are and what we've grown through. So Sykesville has been really focused on their downtown, their historical buildings. I've used my own private money, as have other people in this room, to take the historic part of Sykesville, reinvent it, find ways to be prosperous through it, and do it within the parameters that are already in place at this point. These guys, unfortunately, I'm kind of opposed to, because they're taking, they're looking for a floating scale here, and they're looking for an additional, extended latitude, they're looking for an influx of money that isn't on them, that really comes from areas that don't tie in to what the original master plan set up and what these properties were designed for. So what you're gonna have with this infill of all these extra housing, and also that money that's floating in from the different grants that they're getting, especially like the low-income housing grants, you're going to get housing that is going to put people into town here and overinflate the schools, as we've already heard, and I don't think it's going to do much for the businesses here, because I think the people that are gonna come in are gonna come in, they're gonna leave, they're gonna spend their money elsewhere while their time is being spent elsewhere. Thank you very much.
Frank, thank you, and it's good to see you. Frank used to fix my car. I haven't seen him in a long time. So I've been told there are more interested individuals that would like to speak beyond the number 40. I assume we have less than 10 more, so we'll just call those people up. If anyone has not yet spoken that wishes to speak, please come to the podium.
Hi, I'm Debbie Scheller. I live on Calorama. I also own a business in town, and I have to be honest, I'm torn. As a business owner, the plan is better for me. As a resident, it is not. There are a couple things as a resident. I no longer have children in school, and I was a little put off by your statistics, because statistics are statistics, and you can look things up. The Maryland state, Maryland government enrollment projection plan through 2027 shows that the schools are gonna start going back on their up cycle by 2025, and by 2027, we're gonna be over again. So there are statistics there, too. So I think statistics are whatever you're gonna make them out to be. Another thing is, I'm very concerned of fire, water, police, and who covers that? The taxpayer base covers that. And that is a big concern as a resident and as a business. As a business, yes, we do need traffic downtown. I am a resident for 29 years, and we came in when Bex was there, just opened, and there was a junkyard on Main Street, and the Main Street was basically boarded up. When I started my business 16-plus years ago, we were one of the ones that came in there in the recession. People were saying, you're crazy, start opening the business now, but the people, the community, are the ones that kept us all together. The people, the community here are what keeps Main Street alive. And I, as a business owner, want that to continue, of course, but I think the community does, too, and I don't see that happening with the way the controversy or adversary with these two, with the town and the builders going right now. I do have one other thing, and that is, we met as merchants, both with the mayor and with the builder, and you would think you were talking about two different things. And one of the things that was said here today was that the builder could not get a meeting with the mayor. Well, they could. They wanted it in private, they didn't want a public meeting. That's what we've been told. So if you're willing to meet with the mayor and work together, why doesn't it be public? Why can't it be public? We'd all like to hear what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Hi, my name's Henry Armstrong. I live at 7311 First Avenue. I've been living here my whole life, and...
That's funny. That's not funny, Henry. I mean, I appreciate that. Go ahead. It's not a long time, I guess, according to Lois.
So I've gone through all the school system, through Piney, through the middle school. I'm now at Century in my sophomore year, and there's been a huge impact. I don't know if it's always been like this, because I couldn't really tell my freshman year, but ever since these new buildings have been coming in, the impact on the school system, especially Century, has been astronomical. Like, all my classes that I have, it's always like max capacity, if not more. Like, some of them, we don't even have enough seats, like we have to get more seats from different classrooms and all these kind of things. And so my concern is the school, because like you say, that we're not gonna be getting many more students, but it sounds, I mean, from what we've heard about Ms. Yetman, and I can't remember who else was talking, but like, it sounds like it's a lot of people that are already coming in, even though we're barely starting with most of it. And so my concern is mainly the school system and making sure that there's enough in the school system for everyone, but...
Thank you, Henry.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Vakul Moore, and I'm from Parkside at Warfield. I moved from Howard County after living there for 12 years, and I never wanted to be here because I thought Howard County is so awesome, but after coming here, I changed my mind. I just wanted to say that. I love the farmer's market, I love the whole, like, you know, you feel the fresh air, like you're coming to a fresh air thing, and, you know, you paid some premium to be in that new townhome by Lennar and everything, and now you feel, you looked at the school rating, and they are seven, nine, 10, so you're so proud of that, like, you know, oh, my kid is studying in that. And we came there, and I've recently started talking to the teachers and everyone with my kid, and they clearly mentioned that they have more students than they were expecting. And there are more students, that also brings the quality of education. We are not only compromising their education, we are affecting the whole generation of the kids. Being a father of the younger kids, I'm more concerned about that. That's the first point. And also, like, the commute, like, you know, there are a few buses, and we know that there are some issues with the COVID and other stuff, but there are some safety concerns in the buses, like, you know, when there are not enough buses, and you choose to send them in the bus, there's sitting three kids sitting in one seat, and that happened once, once or twice with my kid, and I'm more worried about that. I'm more worried about my daughter, I'm more worried about my son. If you don't have any plan for that, like, you know, to handle that, it won't make any sense if you're bringing big buildings. I mean, I try to understand the whole thing, you know, but for me, the primary concern is my kid. That's the whole reason why I came to Carroll County, and if it's affecting them, my word is no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So people just stood up. I don't know if it's to leave or to come to the microphone. Has everyone gotten a chance to speak that would like to speak? They're pointing at each other in the corner. So that's, so going once? Going twice? Okay. Thank you, everyone. We'll just leave it at that. Thank you. So we're at the part of the program where it's an opportunity for a Q and A for we, the town council. Questions for staff, if we have them, questions for the developer, if we have them. I'll start with President Carter here on my left and ask if, and we'll just work our way down the line, and you can field your questions to either staff and/or, and then when you're completed with your questions for both entities, we'll move on to your left. Thank you. completed with your questions for both entities, we'll move on to your left. Thank you.
I've been part of many of these conversations, sorry, I can't...
Need your boosters?
Yeah, that's right. I've been a part of many of these conversations throughout the years, almost 10 years now. And I think that a lot of my questions have been answered. I've looked at all of the information, and at this moment, I have no questions.
I also want to thank everyone that came out tonight. I think it's an absolute wonderful showing of our town and our community, and I am very, very appreciative of all of you taking time out tonight in reference to this important matter. I have the opportunity to be a liaison to the Planning Commission, and I still have an open question to the developer. And my open question to the developer is, I mean, you've heard from the community, you've heard from me in reference to the proposal that's been put forward. I guess what I'm interested in is where's the middle ground that we're willing to kind of entertain? I'm very open to having additional conversations and trying to find that middle ground. I think there's a sweet spot that maybe we can get to where we can preserve the buildings and, at the same time, you know, maybe there's a little bit more in terms of residential that we would be open to. But where this goes, it's too far. I mean, I heard a number of people say that tonight. That has been my opinion in reference to this zone tax amendment so far. And I guess that's, it continues to be an open question for me. One of, you know, you provided this document to us, and, you know, I'd, of course, look through the comprehensive plan myself. And throughout the document, and I underlined every time that Sean mentioned it, we talk about mixed use. And when I think of mixed use, I think of mixed use where there's a balance. And right now, with the way that the current zone tax amendment is explained, there's not a lot of balance. At least it doesn't appear that way. And I get that a lot of things could happen as we get into planning out the rest of this. And, you know, we could go in a lot of different directions. But, but I'm, you know, one of the things that I feel is our responsibility as a council is to anticipate outcomes of where we would be heading. And based on the current zone tax amendment that we have, some of, some of those anticipated outcomes would be, you know, however many homes we're talking about, 600 more or whatever. That's a potential. And again, that, that's out of balance. So I guess the question that I have open, and we don't need to talk about it tonight, or you can respond to it, maybe generally, is, you know, is there a willingness to engage in that dialogue? Maybe the last thing I would say before I would open up the question is that we talk about December 31st being, or just, I'm sorry, December 13th, I think, is when you all did an incredible job, mind you, of getting that $15 million catalytic, I'm saying it wrong, catalytic tax credit. We weren't part of that discussion. We, we would have liked to be a part of the discussion, and I think it was a missed opportunity. I've said this at the Planning Commission as well. And as we move forward, what it would be great is if we could partner together as a team and work to find mutual outcomes that are going to be beneficial to all of us. All, you heard so many people, I'm so happy so many came forward. We love this town, right? The reason I moved here is because I wanted my kids to grow up and have a great education, too. And so it was a major driver for my wife and my decision. And so I guess I'm, you know, I'd like to see less missed opportunities as we move forward. And, you know, I just kind of want to put that out there for your consideration. Thanks.
Well, I appreciate the flexibility, and, and, and we will explore it in that same way. To clarify, the reason we've been asking for private conversations is because there is so much information to exchange to get to a similar understanding of the basic activities. No decisions ever get made in private. It's about developing the information and the knowledge base to be able to go back in and make some recommendations. And it's very difficult to take that group of people, plus the Planning Commission, plus the Historic District Commission, and get into the level of detail necessary to grapple with the almost 25 years of history here, the changes, everything else. So I appreciate the flexibility. We're, we're very anxious to engage that. The catalytic tax credit was also developed in a public forum. It was at the state level. And, and so there were opportunities, and we were delighted to get that. But the studies are all in, are all public. It's all information available. It's all available on our website, but we definitely will embrace that. Many things could happen in terms of how this, how this unfolds together, so.
The only other thing I would add, I mean, I believe that we had, we had discussions when, when we were going to the state, every time we testified on, on historic tax credits, every time we put the catalytic tax credit in motion, this wasn't done in a vacuum. I mean, did we come and, and report to the town council or the Planning Commission on it? No, but the town wasn't kept in the dark about it. And, and, and so I just want to make that clear. It wasn't done kind of in a, in a, in a vacuum. The understanding that from, you know, I got involved in this in 2016, and my first experience dealing with this deal was working with Mayor Shaw and, and Dennis Hoover. And it was always very clear, and I think six town managers ago, and it was always clear that we were going to have to go to the state and get creative about it, and that's what we did. And I appreciate the recognition of the hard work that went into that. It, it concerns me that the feeling is that we, we didn't keep the town in the loop on that. I believe that we did. We'll do a better job of that.
So, so my follow-up to it, to that, is that, like, I wasn't asked, being on the council, and I'll just speak for myself, not my counterparts here, what is it that you want to do with, as we move forward? And look, you're right. I could have gone to any of those public hearings myself and weighed in.
And that wasn't a criticism of you, and I...
But it would have been beneficial, I think, for kind of a push and pull sort of an opportunity. Because we knew we were going to come. I mean, y'all are very intelligent people, have been working with you for maybe four or five years, based on Town Council and Planning Commission. You had to have known that coming in with this residential plan was going to be a shock and awe to our system based on what we had previously agreed to some years ago.
I mean, again, I will say that there, and I appreciate, I appreciate your comments on this. We thought the information was making it to you. I can, can't tell you how many times we did have meetings with staff and, and, and the prior mayor, mayor, where we talked about what we were doing. And actually, it was brought up that you guys are going to come in for more housing. I mean, it wasn't a, wasn't a surprise. In fact, we made some presentations going back to August, you know, that alluded to the direction that, that we were, not just alluded, kind of put it out there. So again, I, I appreciate what you're saying. We'll try to do a better job of communicating. We thought we were. To answer one other thing, you know, the, I think Sean alluded to it before, is our process with the Planning Commission previously, when we were doing the PEC plan and the run-up to, and up to closing and everything, was that there was an open discussion and give and take and an opportunity, an opportunity to get questions, answer questions, and make adjustments and go through a process. I think the thing that largely threw us off in this process was that a process with the Planning Commission that we had become accustomed to was, it was just what we did this time around was completely different than anything we had seen before.
So Steve, I'm going to jump in there. When we referred this petition to the Planning Commission, your team was present, including yourself. And I distinctly recall actually having a, a dialogue with you as a result of something that I had said, and that was that the Planning Commission would not be tasked with finding an equitable solution and negotiating your amendments, amendment request.
It was, and it was not, it was, we weren't expecting a negotiation. We were expecting the process to run...
Okay, fair enough.
To run like it traditionally has, according to the Town and State Code and according to custom.
Okay. So I, I just, I take issue with the fact that you're, in my opinion, misrepresenting that it was a shock to you when I made it clear when we referred it to the Planning Commission.
I won't say it's a shock. I'll say we were thoroughly disappointed.
Okay. And I'm going to jump in and kind of piggyback on Councilman Schofield's comments with respect to the $15 million catalytic historic tax credit. I'm not so much concerned about the fact that we weren't getting updates with respect to the progress of the legislation moving along and moving through. I sought out those updates, and I was informed. My concern with respect to the catalytic historic tax credit is that DHCD did not require in your application a letter of support for the plan included in your application. That's not on you guys. Wasn't required. But it kind of brings us to the point where we are today, that you've been awarded $15 million in catalytic historic tax credits, and those were awarded to you according to Deputy Secretary McAvoy based on three assumptions. One, that you guys own the property because apparently some applicants don't own the property, property that they're actually applying for tax credit for. Two, that there was already movement forward, progress on the development in the form of the 145 townhomes. And three, that there was a good working relationship with the town. And I, I questioned Deputy Secretary McAvoy about that final point when I said, "That was an assumption, and that's all it was, because there was no request for input from the town for an application that included, that was purely dependent upon, really, the plan that was included in it, was purely dependent upon the approval of the petition that's before us this evening."
May I respond to that last point real quick?
Well, it wasn't really a question.
Well, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to respond to the last point. We never had any misgivings that we had a strained relationship with the town, and we never...
I'm not suggesting you did. I'm suggesting there was no support for the plan included in your application, which is dependent upon this shift in density, as evidenced by the, the feedback from the public this evening. That being said, I, I also just want to make it abundantly clear that there's been confusion amongst the public with respect to the $15 million tax credit ever since the press release was, was made back in December. And that's that I was flooded with calls and emails, and people were stopping me on Main Street and saying, "It's finally happening. The buildings are going to get restored. But do they have to have, does it have to be residential?" Because that's the takeaway from the press release. And then compiled with that was, or to compound that, it, it appears that the consistent message is that this shift in density unlocks, I think was the phrasing I've heard most recently, the funding stack for the buildings to be saved. But when, in fact, less than one-third of the residential density that's being requested has anything to do with your plan to redevelop the buildings, 177 units is less than one-third of what you're requesting in density increase from a residential perspective. So all the rest of the residential density that you're requesting in this petition, in this text amendment, has to do with the infill and the vacant parcels, not the saving of the buildings or the redevelopment of it.
I don't, I don't agree with that characterization because...
Well, it, it, it's okay that you don't agree with the characterization, but one-third of your residential density increase request is attached to the Lytec apartments, units, I should call them, inside the historic buildings. So to tell the public that the increase, I'm sorry, the shift in density is required to access and unlock the funding, the $15 million funding and funding stack in general to preserve the buildings is just simply inaccurate.
I think, I disagree. I think you're oversimplifying.
And you can.
Well, so I think this is, is this a Q and A?
It's actually, it, it was an attempt on my part to clarify for the public exactly what I've clarified.
So would you...
That, that the Lytec funding is attached to the housing component of saving the buildings, while the rest of the funding that you note on your website, which was not as thorough as what you indicated this evening, that the funding stack that you list on your website, that only of that funding that's tied to residential is the Lytec funding. And the Lytec funding is dependent upon this increase or shift in density that you're requesting this evening.
So may I have an opportunity to respond?
You may.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So there's been, we've spent a lot of time, number one, talking about the public money that we've been able to access for this. And, and I've heard some outcry against that from a couple of speakers tonight, but that's no secret to anybody, and I understand that part of it. But we've all known that it was always going to be required. That doesn't mean there's no private money that will go into those buildings. There's still a gap. And so, right now, I would estimate that our investment, if I may, is probably, I, I know it's between $5 and $6 million. Okay, we're in the negative right now. Despite the fact that it's continually said that we made a killing on the townhouses. Look, we had to buy the thing, and we've continued to spend, spend a ton of money on this project.
Understood.
And, and so you have to recover that investment.
Yes.
Not to mention the fact that there's, there's probably another $10 to $15 million to cover, to, to, to work in private money in the capital stack, okay, that, that's going to be needed. Your debt, even though you're getting tax-exempt debt, they still require you to have skin in the game, as somebody said. Believe me, we have skin in the game. He has skin in the game. We also have infrastructure costs to cover, extending Springfield Avenue, wetlands remediation, which will be done in the park and also include some extra park improvements, just to name a couple. Relocation of a 12-inch water main and demolition of the water tower. We're getting pricing on this right now that we've had to go back and rejigger because, because pricing's all over the, the map. But my last estimate on it, that it was somewhere between $6 and $7 million. So the whole, we focus on parcel D because that big gap of the, the big funding gap was so very important. That doesn't mean that there's not additional capital required, and that doesn't mean that there's not additional infrastructure. Somebody asked, said something about infrastructure. We're building, we're building a road to connect Buttercup to Buttercup. We're extending Springfield Avenue. We're relocating a water main, getting rid of that water tower, and, and doing wetlands remediation. And I'm sure there's some other things that I'm missing that will pop up. So it's a vast, we try to simplify things to, to make the dialogue easier and to focus on the buildings. But you can't really divorce those historic buildings from the other things that need to happen out there. There's also the notion with that additional housing, we have workforce housing that we're talking about, which I'm really disturbed by a couple of comments I heard about workforce housing and the kinds of people that it brings in. That's, that's concerning. But we've got workforce housing, we've got 500,000 square dollar townhouses, and we're trying to find something in the middle, too.
No one ever said that.
I, it started there, and there were a couple of others. So that's, that's, that aside, you know, one of the things, when this property was sold, that people don't know, that the town signed a disposition and development agreement.
Okay, we're getting off. We are, we're getting, yes, we are. I wanted to clarify the funding stack comment for the people here in the room.
And, and the density, and what drives the, what drives residential.
Yes.
And if you, if you look at the disposition and development agreement, it talks about higher-density residential to unlock programmatic resources from the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Yes.
So there are parts of the, there are parts that aren't being shared with people.
Ask my question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my turn.
Yes.
As the newest town council member, I spoke with you for a long time during the campaign. And started as a town resident who's been here for a long time, raised my children here, to understand what you were trying to do and why the buildings weren't built. You and I had a lot of very frank, open... You and I had a lot of very frank, open conversations. I've heard you question what a small-town charm means. This is what it means. It means that as neighbors, we watch out for each other, we care about each other, but we also approach things with humility, with ownership, with assuming positive intent. My concern, as I've heard from many of my, from other residents, is this hostility that I don't understand.
And we don't understand it either.
And what has, well, in my experience, as a resident, I didn't understand it. I spoke with you a lot, and was very honest and direct with you. You shared with me an understanding that 67% of the town supported 100% residential movement over in Warfield. And I told you when I went door-to-door that I would ask, and every week you and I spoke, and I said, "Steve, I haven't met your 67% who want the residential." So you spent a year, I know at least, with that as your only goal. And in the times that you've come to the Town Council meetings, I've asked you honest and open questions. I don't think I've ever been hostile. I think I've been very concerned, and I have a lot of questions. It's my nature. What I've noticed in return is, on two separate documents, you've personally noted me as being hostile and aggressive towards you.
Have I?
Yes.
Which two documents are you referring to?
Both, the two documents we just recently received, where it was questioned, where I was quoted at a meeting I never even existed, never even attended. So thanks, but I wasn't there. And in other ones, where it was suggested that I was somehow communicating with Planning Commission members I've never met.
You're talking about the Open Meetings Act violation.
And your request for recusal of the mayor.
Right.
Where you directly noted me. I don't understand why there's a need, from my perspective, for you, for your team, to continue to have, an attempt to have a hostile relationship. We all live here. We want this to be a great community, and we want Warfield to be part of that. So my request to you is to stop defending and continuing to explain over and over again the same things, and find a way to compromise with us. As my council member, you know, mentioned, come to us, work with us. I have asked openly and directly to attend the community meetings that you have, so that I can hear what you're saying to the community, and I can hear what the community says to you. And you told me I was not welcome, and that I was not allowed to come, and that you would tell me what they said. To me, that's not open and transparent, and I don't understand the need to separate all of us. I agree with everyone. Talk openly in public with all of us, but in my experience, the hostility that people are noting, I've noticed come from you. And I don't understand it, and I don't appreciate it, and it doesn't help our small town at all. So my request to both of you is that you work with us and stop trying to attack individual members. I don't think it gets us anywhere, and it doesn't promote any of the way my neighbors treat each other at all. And so I ask that you start taking a note from our residents, and find out what small-town charm here in Carroll County and in Sykesville means, and bring that to the table, please, because I haven't seen it. I've seen defensiveness, I have not seen humility, I have not seen ownership, and I have yet to see any compromise. And we're not going to get there with 100% residential. We hear that you have concerns about the amount of commercial, but we're just standing on two separate sides. And I would really like to see from your team much more humility and much more partnership, that I just don't understand from day one why it hasn't been there. And I've asked for it, and I've asked to be part of that, and I've been told no, or misquoted on places I don't even, I'm quoted as being at a meeting I never attended, saying things I've never said. So it's not helpful.
That's all you have to say? Okay.
It's refreshing.
So I really don't have any questions. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I think I've been on the council eight years, I think, straight, and it seems to me, as a councilperson, you guys come, you come for an ask. You know, in the past, I think we've kind of accommodated you, and I think what you're hearing from the residents and probably getting from us is, we'd like to see some kind of work on a historic building, something. I know there's a lot of infrastructure going on out there, but I believe one resident said, "I walk by historic Warfield all the time, and the buildings are just deteriorating as they are." So I really think that would go a long way with some goodwill on your part, and it would show the residents here that you actually really do want to restore some of these buildings. It would show the council that you really want to restore some of the buildings.
Understand. I hear a lot that we've done nothing for the buildings. I've spent over $1 million, well over $1 million, working on that. First thing we did when we, actually, I started before I owned the buildings. I leased two of them, and I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars cleaning those up, putting a new roof on the F Building, variety of things like that. One of the things that happens is, you can't spend a lot of money on the buildings until you're ready to be done, because of the way the tax credits work. You've got a limited period of time. So the first $500,000 I spent is already out of tax credits. It's gone. There's no way to recover it. It's very challenging. We did roof patching, we've got a group that comes out every year, the roofs, they still need a lot of work, and you see particularly the gutters and downspouts are always a battle. But there's a ton of work going on all the time. They're coming out again for the annual inspection, they replace slates. They're the world's best guys for the kind of slate that's on those buildings. There's a lot more going on than people see. They are deteriorating. I can't wait to get them done. That's why we're trying to put together a program that allows us to address them right away. So thanks for your comments.
I, too, would like to thank everyone for coming out. One of the reasons we love our town is we're involved in it. So thank you for everyone coming out. I'd also like to make a statement. I was the previous liaison to the Planning Commission, and they do a heck of a job. They're looking out for the best interests of everyone, and I want to thank them as well. I do have two questions. One question has two parts, and it's more theoretical, but one of the comments you made is, I sort of tried to assess opposed, support, or mixed. And ignoring observational bias, I find quite the reverse. And this doesn't quite match, because it's an odd number. 67% opposed, 9% support, and 19% are mixed, as in I got mixed messages in them. So here's my three questions. Number one, given the fact that of the people here tonight, you're, it's almost mirror image, you said, "Oh, 70% support it." I don't see that tonight here. I don't see 70%. In fact, I show 67% saying quite the reverse. My question is, and this is yes or no, and if you would now, that's great. If not, I'll wait for it. Do you plan to change your overall approach based on the fact that instead of a 70% yes, it's a 70% no? Think about that. You don't have to answer. And now, the second one is more theoretical, and it goes like this. Given that communication is a way of exchanging information and reaching a solution, clearly that's not working. Clearly, we are not communicating. There was discussion here about what someone meant by what they said, and we clearly have two diametrically opposed views, and I believe that everyone is sincere, and they said no and yes, and they both believe they're right, and I don't believe anybody's lying. I think they perceived it that way. So clearly, as the old movie said, what we have here is a failure to communicate. So here are my questions. What concrete steps, and I don't expect you to give them to us now, write them down, send them to us, what concrete steps do you need from us to begin the process of communicating more effectively and working with us to reach consensus, to define terms, so when someone says a term, we all don't go, "Well, it means this, oh, no, it means that," that we would all go, "A horseshoe is a thing you put on the bottom of a horse's foot," rather than something you throw at a stick to play a game with. And the second question is, what concrete steps do you need from us that you would like us to do and get from us, so we can reestablish trust, begin to communicate a shared dialogue, and then start to make things happen for everyone's mutual benefit, given the statistics I gave you about how many people said no to what you're asking, but we might be able to come to some equitable solution? But I don't believe anybody's going to get everything they want. I think, like the old argument, you know, you know you've had a good negotiation where everybody is civil, but nobody's happy. So think about that and reply later if you want.
I definitely will. It requires a much more detailed and more thoughtful response than I can give you off the top of my head. But we've been listening very carefully. We've been very delighted to have this much dialogue going on, and I promise we'll respond.
Thank you.
Thanks. I know a lot of people couldn't make it tonight, so I would encourage anyone who's watching online, if they still want to get their views in, to email either Joe or the mayor and make sure they get their view in. Sorry, I apologize. Anyone who wants to get their views still in who couldn't make it tonight, please email those. Having been on the council for 15 years, I've been dealing with this for quite some time, dating back to other proposals from other developers that just ultimately didn't work out. But I will echo what former Mayor Shaw said and former councilmember Rukwalski, was that when the town annexed this property, it was for the purpose of making sure that we could control what went on there. And when we agreed to this transaction with the developer, it was with the understanding that these buildings, these historic buildings, were going to be rehabilitated, and the residential impact was going to be limited. I understand there are changes in economics over the years, and things change, but there was a reason we agreed to this initially, and I want to try to stick to that as much as possible. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, council. So I guess at this point, with no further comments from the public or from the council or questions for that matter, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Are we going to close it, or are we going to continue at the next meeting?
Unless you do want to keep it open till the night to allow people to provide written comments.
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
If that's what you'd like to do, all right. We will keep the public hearing open, and we will look for a motion to adjourn. But before I do ask for that, I just want to remind everyone, then therefore, we will be picking this matter up again where we left off on Monday, May 9th, at our next regularly scheduled Town Council meeting, where it will, where we will meet in the council chambers at the townhouse.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
Thank you, everybody, for your time and patience.